We heard.
Okay. Happy Thanksgiving week to everyone. We have anybody online Kim? We do not. Okay. We can forego a lot of the SOP stuff.
Excuse me for one second. Did you do the second, the Tuesday, the one that had the second and the fourth Tuesday?
Make sure we get the right.
Yeah. There's because there is two, there's two in there that we don't use and there's one that we do. I just wanted to make sure.
Anybody know a good joke?
I know a couple of good jokes.
Can you sell one mix up?
No.
Oh, I could've.
Have you seen somebody out there to send them in?
Okay, that's not it.
Awesome. Okay. All right, well, restart here. We did do the pledge of allegiance. So that has been taken care of. We started the meeting. We had a slight hiccup with the the virtual connection, but I think we're connected. Hello, Mary? And thanks folks for tripling the size of our crown. This is the November 23rd meeting of the town of Canada with planning board. For the purpose of the group, I will go through introducing the folks here at the front desk. At my far right is John Robitell, the recording secretary. Next to John is Kim Burkhardt. Had a senior moment. Kim Burkhardt, she's taking care of the virtual connection. And then we have Amanda Van Lake in town, our planning board member, Bob LeCorse, planning board member, Gary Humes, short time planning board member. And Ryan Stachak to my right, planning board member. I'm Chuck Euler. I am the chairman. To my left is Shawna Botsick, the town planner. Then we have Lance Brayvan from MRB. And last but far from least, Chris Nadler, our town and planning board attorney. Okay, we have a small crowd, which is good. It's manageable. What we'll do is go through the agenda. If you got an agenda out front, we have them there. Everybody got one? Okay, we'll follow the agendas published. And on each application, we'll ask the applicant to make a presentation or someone on his behalf. And then we'll go to the planning board and ask planning board members for questions and comments on the plan. I will open it up to the audience for any questions, concerns they may have. Then I'll come back to the playing board and we will deliberate on the application. And if possible, take action this evening. If you come to the podium, please give us your name and address. If you're out there in virtual land, get our attention and give us your name and address. I will recognize you and then you can speak. We have two exits here to my right and left. Should we have an emergency? Please use those exits. Hopefully we will not. And with all that being said, I guess we can move on to the continued public hearings. We do have a new public hearing this evening. And it is for Veneti Associates 3904 Westlake Road, a single stage subdivision, a three lot subdivision. That has been duly published in the Daily Messenger and I don't have the date in front of me, but I know it was published well, well before the time required. John, if you can pick that up somewhere. Okay. I will now ask for privilege of the floor. Anyone that's in the audience live or virtually that would like to address the board on an issue that is not on our agenda, now's the time to speak. If you would come to the podium, give us your name and address. And you have the floor. Anyone? Okay, you're all here for the agenda then. Good. Our first first application is continued public hearing for marks engineering representing Carol Eichert, owner of property at 3535 State Route 364. Who are seeking a preliminary subdivision approval and preliminary site plan approval for construction to single family residences, 116 townhomes, a 2,000 square, 2,000 linear foot dedicated road. This is a continuation from our October 12th hearing. I will now reopen the hearing and I will call in our attorney to give us the status as to what has been done and what, what action the board should, should or should not.
Standing based on the letter that's handed to me by our town planner, does the applicant withdraw on this application? Therefore, the applicant is free to reapply if they may desire, which as I'm sure you know, they have done so. At some point in the future, you'll be seeing requests coming for you in the form of a referral from the town board for advisory opinion on mixed use over lately.
Okay, any questions to the board? If not, I guess we close, do we close the hearing or just leave it open? Doesn't matter.
It's gone.
Let's go on. Well, okay, just to button it up. Let's close, close it and therefore no further action is required by the board on this application. And CPN 21035 is moot. Okay, the next continued.
Was there, was there anybody here that was here just for that? Notice that? Okay.
Anybody out there? Somebody in virtual land? Okay. We're talking about Canada with shores. Anyone want to speak? Okay, it is, it is a null and void application. We'll move on to the next continued public hearing, which is Veneti Associates, representing Corey Westbrook, owner of property. Yet to be determined on Linda Drive, seeking single stage subdivision grade four lots of various sizes. This application was pending ZBA action on November 16th. That's my understanding that that did not occur. And therefore there's nothing this board can do at this time without any adjudication from the ZBA. Am I correct?
That's correct.
So therefore we have a resolution in front of us. To continue. Let me, okay, let me open the public hearing first. Does anyone like to speak on this particular application? Nothing will occur this evening, so it's certainly your prerogative since it is a public hearing. You have the right to talk, speak. If not, I will close the public or continue the public hearing in conformance with the resolution before us. And the suggestion is that we continue the public hearing until January 25th? Is that okay with everyone? I think that's after the January. That's after the January CBA meeting. So depending what happens on the 18th, we will reconsider this application on the 25th. Do I have a motion to continue this application? To change? Hey man, just made a motion. Do I have a second? Thank you, Bob. Any further discussion by the board? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Wrong. The next is a continued site plan from Thornton Engineering, represent Frontenac Holding LLC, owner of property at 2121 State Route 332. Seeking a single stage site plan approval for the construction of approximately 10,210 square feet of new asphalt for boat display purposes. Applicant is requesting a waiver to reduce the front landscape buffer from width of 20 feet to 10 feet. This would be a continuation of our meeting on the 26th of October. I think at that meeting, we asked the applicant to go back, provide some more information to the board so that we could consider it as part of the application. And my understanding is it has not been provided.
Correct.
So seeing we have not received the information we requested. I guess we will continue this also. And there was a request from the applicant.
There was.
So the record shows that the applicant did ask for continuance. So are we looking at the same meeting in January?
The, they did not give us a date.
Send it to that meeting.
Yeah, they vary on.
There's no ZVA involved with this.
The first one we would do continue down.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we do the first one? Because I think the second one started to fell off again. So it would be the 25 minus 14, the 11th of January. So Lance would prepare a resolution of that effect, but essentially we agreed the same as the one we just adopted.
I have one.
We've got one on the second page.
Oh, you did? Oh.
January 11.
Don't move.
Thank you. Okay, so we got a motion, a second to continue review of the site plan to January 11th. All in favor? I post. Okay. We're onto the new public hearing for Veneti Associates, as I mentioned previously. This is a three lot subdivision on 50, at 5,200 Foster Road. And it is to create three new lots of various sizes, two of them being 30,000 square feet. And the other lot being a remainder, the residual of 13.79 acres. And I will open the public hearing. And Rocco is here, I believe.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Sure can. You sound good.
Yeah, finally.
So tell us about what's happening on Foster Road.
So my son and his partners are buying this from the German brothers. And right now they want to, you know, retain 13 acres in the back and sell off the two front lots, one on either side, west, the west and east. They meet code, very straightforward. A conventional subdivision, 30,000 square foot lots with 125 feet of frontage and then remaining parcels in excess of all that. So pretty straightforward. That's what we're doing. We're asking for.
Okay, board members, questions?
Hey, Rocco, Bob LeCorse.
Hey, Bob.
Hey, my only question was that your lot sizes are totally different than all the other lot sizes up and down that road. Is there a reason why you're not going to go back as far as the other ones?
Yeah, because my son and his partners are going to do a conservation subdivision on remaining lands. So, so that would, if we did that, it would kind of be problematic coming back later and doing that.
And that barn is going to come down?
Barn is going to come down, yeah.
Is.
We got somebody interested in removing it.
Is it clear on the plans the barns to be removed?
Not clearing a plan.
It doesn't show.
I, I could add that note if you want me to.
Please, yeah, okay. And the driveways, the current driveways, I guess, will go away because it'll be a new access to the conservation lot.
Well, one of the driveways will stay there because it'll be the entrance, you know, temporary, but then eventually there'll be a new entrance. So okay, yeah, yeah, kind of all that stuff's going to go away. Yeah.
Okay. It's on sewer water?
Yes. Yes. Everything's there. Yeah.
Yeah, where's the gas line? Is it on your side of the road or the other side?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I think it's on the north side.
Okay, I noticed it wasn't shown. If you could locate that, that, that should be shown, Rocco.
We, we can do it.
Okay. I guess the seeker popped up an archaeologically sensitive area. Have you contacted the ship at all?
Have not.
It's not necessarily required for subdivision. It will be required for them prior to doing any disturbances on the site like the site. So that would be the time if they, if they do have intentions of developing in the future, then that would be something they would have.
Okay.
Part of that.
Forewarned.
I got it.
Will the development of the lots, one and two, the smaller lots, will they require site plan?
Yes.
They will. Or one, good.
That's one of the
Okay.
We put something on that says it's not a buildable lot.
We have that in there.
Yep.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. On that note though, it is a buildable lot. It's just that it's not an approved build, buildable lot, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, he said it's a buildable lot, just not approved, but approved.
Right.
Right, because we don't make subdivisions. We're creating buildable lots because we don't allow the subdivision of a, of a non-buildable lot.
Right.
Okay.
A developable.
Right.
Whatever we want to call it. Yeah.
It's not approved.
It's not approved. There's no
No building until site planned, until it comes back.
Typically put a note on there saying it's a subject to planning board site plan approval.
Yeah.
Any, any wetlands, watercourses in the back?
There's a gully in the back, but there's no wetlands.
Okay. Yeah, it's a Tichener gully. Very familiar. Okay, anybody else on the board have any questions? Anyone from the audience? This is the Foster Road subdivision. Anybody in TV land? Okay, if not, let's move on to seeker. We have a resolution from Lance. It's a, oh, unlisted action. But before I do that, I will close the public hearing. And we'll move on to deliberation of the seeker unlisted action resolution. If you've looked at type, part one and Lance has supplied part two and three, any issues? I don't see any. Okay, I think we're, I'll entertain a motion just for the seeker unlisted action.
I'll make a motion here for CPN 20 dash 081 seeker resolution, unlisted action. That it will not result in any significant adverse, you know, impacts.
Okay, so a second. Okay, motion second. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Yep, I can do that whenever. Let's move on to the subdivision itself. Before I do that, I just want for the record, it was not sent to the county plane board. It was not required. MRB did send us a comments back in a letter on the 11th of November. Chris Jensen gave us an email on October 19th regarding the driveway locations. You having the condition, I think Chris Jensen, okay, so that'll have to be met. And all that being said, someone want to make a motion on the subdivision?
I want to accept CPN either Rocco, the representative of the county, for the 3 lot subdivision. Two state subdivision.
Yeah, there's the six I was referenced. I added the seventh, which stated that notice to be added to the subdivision plan that states that the existing barn is to be removed. I don't, I don't think there's any other.
Show the gas main.
Oh, okay. So then, so then eight would be also the subdivision plans that would be revised to show the existing infrastructure along the roadway.
Specifically, yes. He shows the water and sewer. All right, we have a
There's only one mic.
Oh. All right, I have a motion second. I, I'll second it.
Gary seconded.
We got a motion second for discussion. Not all favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Rocco.
Everybody have a great Thanksgiving. We'll see you on the flip side.
Okay.
On the flip side.
All right, we're going to next. Oh, the next site plan, we're off to new site plans. And the first one being Mark's Engineering, representing Franker Lake's radio and Keith Rosado, owner of property at 3060 Kevin Route 10, requesting single stage site plan approval for construction of accessory structures. I guess there are a couple loose ends. First of all, we got a new, new set of plans today. Oh, you did? So. Oh. I have no idea what they show, what changed. I know we had
If you want me to talk to Chuck, I can.
Oh, okay. Okay, I don't mean this in the hearing, so you can head out. Go ahead, Brian.
Okay, yeah, so as you guys may remember back in March, you've approved this site plan for the accessory structure building, but the approval expired. The approval was conditioned on the county sewer allowing connections so they could remove a leach septic system in the backyard. But that county sewer dedication from Creekview Apartments took, well, over a year. And it just recently was dedicated over so that Mr. Rosado could now connect and now he can move forward. But since our, that our approvals, approvals expired and here we are again. There was a change in the plan today because reviewing the violations which are on hold for this project requested a dumpster enclosure. And we added that to the south side of the new structure. The there is a few violations on this property, most of which result in him not being able to build this structure to house his equipment, his materials, his vehicles to conduct his business. The, there was a parking area that was installed on the south side of the existing office structure that he has been using, was not permitted, but he is as you can see, out of space on that site and definitely out of space on the existing building. Really needs to get the accessory structure up so that he can house his business and continue on in the town of Canada. And so those are the, the holds placed on the violation, basically as I understand is, is, would be resolved after the permit is issued in the building is construction, constructed.
So we're in a chicken or egg?
Yep.
Okay. Board members, how do you feel? Or Lance having
I was just going to say, I believe one of the items that we were looking into was addressing the PRC comments. Maybe that's a starting spot for the board discussion.
And those requests were statement of operations? And a landscape plan? Yeah, Brendan, I don't know if you sat in on the PRC meeting, but at that meeting, it was requested that the applicant is required to provide a statement of operations as well as a landscape plan. We didn't, I didn't see it. The other board members saw that information. Back at they would be going the last few days. I do see in front of us right now, this, this hour placed in front of us, a statement of operations.
Right. So we, we provided a statement of operations today, correct? We didn't provide one. We originally got the approval on the accessory structure. That was added today. And I can go down through them. I was fully prepared to go down through them at this meeting to, to talk about the operations. But I figured it may be best to provide a written document before I reviewed them with, in the planning board meeting. As far as the landscaping goes, there is plantings provided on the site plan that do show along the parking area, which complies with the landscaping code for, for Canada.
Was that that line of trees?
Yes. Yeah.
I think that was proposed originally, right?
That's correct. Yeah, there's really no changes to the plans from the original proposal, other than that dumpster enclosure we added to the south side of the plant, south side of the building.
Mr. Chairman, I understand that we just received the submission today.
Yeah.
Does the planning board's procedure violated town planner by, by hearing this application today, or should it be continued?
I asked the chairman to consider continuing it.
Which only up to the board. I don't think we want to start pressing the plans coming in in the PM and then us have to review them that evening.
I totally understand Chuck and the board. It's, they added a dumpster enclosure was, it was of late today. So I understand what you guys are need time to review that.
And the other thing is I'd certainly like to hear from Chris Jensen as, as his position on the violations. I know you described them, but it would be much simpler if the violations have been cleaned and buttoned up and taken care of. I realize one of them is the traction closure. And I think the board is willing to consider that being part of your revised, or your, your plan. But if there's any other issues as far as vehicles outside, some of the other things that Chris had, I think those should be cleaned up and done before we take action. So.
But Chuck, I mean, honestly, building materials being stored outside, those need to go in the barn. The, I don't think it was vehicles outside was a violation as much as they were parked on an unapproved belt parking lot, which is the area that's on the south side of existing office, which needs to become a parking lot so that he can store his equipment there. I mean, he's going to continue on being in business here, you know, until we review this again. The thing is, is we got to get a barn built so we can get some of the stuff inside.
I think one of the issues that I made, Mr. Chairman, is that we're, this use is pushing what's allowable and community commercial. And I think that's something that the board really needs to consider.
Why?
Because storage is becoming, or it has become a storage yard. It's more of an industrial use. So we need to just ensure that it's keeping in with the character and the name of it.
Yeah. So community, community commercial is there and then industrial is just to the south?
It's close, yeah.
Yeah, industrial is just on the other side of County Road four there then? Is that where it starts? Or no? No, he's, so he's a south. He's, he's just, he's right next to
He's right next to the habitat and right near the new DeMarco project.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, because they came in, they were concerned, they were concerned about water flowing off the roof right into the project. Were you here, Bob, for that? Amanda, maybe this is just before your time. They, they came in, they were concerned about water, if my mind reminds me. And then something about when they put the sewer line in, it created water into this basement.
Yeah.
Right?
It's going to be
Is that the same project? So I, I feel like these are the same issues that came up last time too, right? All right?
Yeah, we had conditions of stormwater calculations for the swell that's provided behind the building.
Yep.
Yes.
So they, they were not able to do those improvements yet because they had not officially got assigned plans. Because some of those conditions couldn't be addressed until they got county sewer approval, which didn't occur until very early. Because some of those conditions couldn't be addressed until they got county sewer approval, which didn't occur until very late. So, all the improvements, some of which are you're referencing, can't be addressed until they can actually do the work. Yeah, and then once they can do the work, then they can address some, some of these issues, the violation stuff, sounds like there's been things going on there without. An approval and that's separate as I see it. I don't, I don't, I'm just saying.
The, the community commercial code allows for electrical, heating, plumbing and woodworking shops.
Okay.
Right, but it doesn't allow for a construction.
Storage.
Which is what it's become.
I would, I would write, I would, I would associate a construction yard with a large fence scenario which would be for lay down for pipe and storage materials. That a construction company would use to build houses and or infrastructure.
We're, we're getting way into the weeds. This isn't a meeting, I mean, this can be all addressed with an operations plan that's just born aside for review.
Right.
We're just saying stuff now.
Well, we're gonna continue, it's just a matter of when and why, why is because we just got this information today, so that's, that's been answered. And the, again, I, the concern on the violations, if. The violations are going to be resolved with the plan that you're proposing. I think that can be part of your presentation at our next meeting when you show the revised plan. And we'll confirm with Chris that the, if those improvements are made, that the violations can go away. And you'll be back in compliance, so with that being said, I think if we're looking at the fourteenth of December. We could move that, this application to that date, we'll have a chance to look at the new plan. Chris will have a chance to look at it, see if it takes care of his issues. Chris Jensen and the board will have a final chance to look at. Yeah, yeah, Brendan, could you work, work a little more on the landscape plan too? Maybe do a little more, you, you're familiar with that area, you did the one down at the storage yard. And you know what we, we're looking for along the frontage there, so if you can work on that too, that would be helpful.
When should he have that submitted to the town like? I think it's important just to reference.
Well, our deadline is passed for December, so I'd like to push it.
Whatever the rules procedure say.
Yeah, we don't have, we've already set the agenda.
Okay.
For the December meeting.
Chuck, wasn't there an issue with the fence being on the line versus off the line, something?
Uh, you wanna address that to Brendan?
Hey Brendan, Brendan?
Yeah.
Bob, of course, there was a question I read in the literature about the fence being on the line versus off the line, you talked to that?
So the fences existing now, typically fences are installed within a half a foot of the line. Or else they're required to provide access to the opposite side of the fence through some kind, some kind of access point. So they're typically installed right on the line is what our fences are used, is what fences are used installed.
So that fence is already there?
Yep.
Alright, thank you.
And I just, you know, I, I wanna tell Chuck, I just wanna say to Chuck, you know, we, we've reviewed this plan once, we've went through all this with the landscaping. We, we've, you've approved it once, we're just, we're just looking to update this because we had to let approval expire. Because the, the Creekview could not dedicate over that sewer line fast enough.
I hear you. Okay, what's the board wanna do, staff recommending January? Have a resolution to continue for January eleven?
I'm not gonna do, I'm not gonna be here, so I'm not gonna make a motion, I can't. Yes, Bob, I'll make that motion to delay to January eleventh meeting.
A motion to continue action on this application in January eleventh. May I have the second bit? All favor. Okay, moving on to. Parsons. Be represented by Phil Grove, owner property has yet to be determined, addressed in Knock Road. Single state site plan approval, construction of a single family dwelling. You've gotten. Surely you got correspondence from.
Yeah, request from the applicant to continue until the January twenty fifth.
So move. Question Ryan, second I think from Bob. To continue this. Site plan approval process to January.
Twenty five.
Okay, all favor. Okay, next one is Marathon Engineering, representing John and Joy and Smith, there's a property at forty five nineteen. Landing Drive, Davidson Landing Drive, request of some state site plan approval. To renovate an existing cottage and construct a new addition with garage. Good evening.
David Hammond representing John and Smith, who are independents also. And we're, I have an architect representative where the architects of the project also on Zoom is looking. Presentation of the engineering. So I'm just gonna quickly, briefly introduce it and then we'll take over. Basically, I know this project is. In this direction, which we feel is the best and successful, is the cottage to the north on the ground, there were two, there are two structures. The cottage to the north is gonna be renovated and added on to to the south. And we have renderings, site plans can show that in better detail, but basically it's maintaining some character and history of the site that way. A lot of the site features to lakeside can be maintained that way as well. So it gives a nice. Ensemble, ensemble of old and new together in a traditional way. So what I'll do is turn it over to Luke, it's now moving on to the engineering set plans.
Thanks, thanks David, this is Luke from Marathon Engineering. And we did the, the site design for this property. And you can see the building footprint there, it falls within all the. Required setbacks in, in terms of a pre-existing non-conformity. And so there's no variances required with the proposed layout. That's why we're here today. And it appears that this is the latest plan, so we submitted these plans. Among the, or so go and receive comments from the town and also comments from Don Havens at the, the county public works. And we addressed those comments in writing and revised the plans, most of the comments are straightforward, just adding some additional. Information to the plans. But from a site coverage standpoint, it's just, just below existing, at or below existing. The, the building coverage is within the required allowances. All the existing utilities are being reused, so most of the utilities, the gas, the water, the electric. And, and the sanitary sewer come into that northern portion of the, of the structure, which is page right. And, and, and that's the portion that's being renovated as opposed to reconstructed, so all those utilities are gonna be reused and. No work done on site. And then there's a landscaping plan included to help spruce up the site. If you've walked the site, and I believe we have a rendering that's hopefully available on the screen that shows sort of a lakeside view of the property, but it's. It's been landscaped really well to date and we're hoping to, you know, to continue that through the project. With strong erosion control measures during construction and a landscaping plan to, to. Sort of spruce it back up afterwards. So if there's any specific questions about the revisions we made or the comments that were made, any additional concerns by the board, we can. Talk to those, but I guess first I'll, I'll hand it back over to the folks in the room, if there's anything left.
Luke, your latest plan was stated, revision dated November ele nineteenth, right?
That's correct.
Okay, you had said you submitted the plan's up for review a month ago, so just wanna make sure, talking the right plan.
Yeah.
And I think that was in response to some of the MRV comments, right?
All, all the comments, yeah, so that revision addressed all the comments that we received.
David, anything else or would the Smiths like to say anything?
No, unless, excuse me. There was a rendering from Lakeside, I don't know.
Yeah, you could pull that up. Very nice perspective.
We also put a picture because it was part of our inventory.
From the lake, I saw that too, yep.
It would be nice to give.
So what they're, what they're looking at, just to make sure, my, so the northern part is, it says is renovating, is that southern part being demolished and rebuilt? And attached, so it's all gonna be one, right, the different heights. And which was, which was lower and which was, was it north one? Okay.
Yeah, you can see all the landscaping there is existing, that couple some walls existing.
Okay.
So we're able to maintain on that.
Tree to be removed, certainly wouldn't show in this rendition, but.
Right.
That is in front of, almost in the area where the taller tree is.
Yeah, that's, that's correct, the tree you see that sort of helps to shield the view of the house from the lake, that's. Basically the replacement tree for that, that tree that has to be removed, it's been. Being removed because it's, it's, you know, it's got some problems, it's got some diseases that they've been working to counteract, but haven't been able to. So now is the time to take it out and to get something healthy in there.
An oak, white oak?
The existing tree is a white oak, yeah, the proposed replacement is a maple.
So is that white oak getting just hammered by a gypsy moth? And it's pretty sad to miss it, you know, miss it.
It's right in front of the water to eat.
Yeah.
Pizza oven.
Yeah, you know, Luke, what are you gonna put in place of it?
How big?
Maple, sugar maple?
Is it, is it a red maple species?
Red maple?
Yeah.
Crimson maple or something? I have to ask Mr. Mr. Smith, is your heart set on a white facade? You're pretty definite.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that's, well, I guess it, it's gonna be all new siding, I guess.
Hey Lucas, this is Bob, of course, had a question on the driveway coming into the garage. It seems like it's awful tight for a fire department, have you looked at that, and the driveway being nine feet versus normally our twelve feet, can you talk to that?
Yeah, so this, this property would be, it'd be serviced by the fire department from Davidson Landing, it's with, it's within the. The distance to be able to access it from there, and that's really the only place that you could get a. An emergency vehicle to turn around. And so there's, there's an apron up at the entrance, and that's where the fire department would pull over and access the property.
Yeah, I gotta check with Brendan, because it's normally we get a little bit more, I think, than that, and it's twenty degrees, it's awful tight right on the end.
Yeah, it, well. Yeah, and I'll say that the, the driveway layout is similar to the existing, it is, is being reduced in order to. To pull back on the site coverage, but. But there, there's no way you could get a fire truck in there today.
Yeah, well, in but not out.
That's true, yeah.
Have, have you looked at the permeable pavers instead of tar?
Yeah, and we're using a, a product, I talked to the, the Environmental Conservation Board about this. We're using a solution that we feel is better, and it holds up better in these areas, and it's basically. A stone sub base that's covered in topsoil and it's planted with grass. And, and you can add a geogrid that helps to reinforce that topsoil, but it eliminates the issue of permeable pavement, which tends to. Tear up in four or five seasons because of the freeze thaw cycle.
And where's that gonna be used, Luke, and is it shown on the plan?
Yeah, there's, there's two areas identified on the plan to, to help with pulling up over and parking on the property. And there's, there's one up by the entrance, so in the north corner of the site, yeah, you can see those two shaded areas. So, so one's up by the entrance and one, the entrance of the driveway and one's by the entrance of the home. And so those are two pull over parking areas, and, and so those will look like lawn, they'll be green, they'll function like grass, but they're reinforced to help support vehicles. Yeah, we see this implemented a lot for. Town access driveways. If, if there's somewhere that you need to get vehicles, where you don't necessarily wanna put a, a road that's sticking out, so. I think this is a good solution in terms of finding permeable drivable areas.
If built right, they can carry a fire truck.
Yeah.
Is there a detail on that, on the detail sheet?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think I see it, but how many inches of sub base do you put down there?
Nine inches.
And is that encased within a geotextile fabric?
Yes, it is.
Cool.
It's, I, correction, it's eight inches.
Yeah.
Wrapped in fabric.
Yes, it's cool, good idea.
Yeah.
Lance, you notice any issues with that driveway coming into the garage for fire department?
Say that again, it's part of what?
There's a twenty degree turn coming into the driveway, is that a problem? He said he can't even get a fire department down in there.
No, I mean, there's. Fire department is going to wanna turn around, but ultimately we solicit those comments from the fire department, I don't believe we got any for their application. So in terms of getting that comment, I think we've done what we're required to do. Obviously, that turn is gonna be difficult, but there's other vehicles that fire departments could use. If they can't access it, they're gonna access it from the road and do it that way.
Okay. I'm gonna fall off on that.
The, the PRC meetings are making an effort to make sure that we solicit comments from the fire department as part of the requirements, because we do have. A number of developments that come to us that have scenarios that are very difficult, and we wanna make sure that we're, we're at least trying to do what we can to accommodate. Their requirements or requests.
Okay.
Okay, anything else from the board, I'm just looking through my notes. It was not required to be submitted to the county planning board, so we have no response from them. Lance, you had an extensive review, but Marathon, Luke got back to you with responses to that.
Yes, so there was some, we have some specifics on the retaining wall, some of the drainage stuff that we were trying to work through. And some on the, on the rain garden specifically because of the depth of it, and we did receive revised plans from, from Marathon and response ladder. We had, I did have a chance to go through those comments, I'm satisfied with the changes that have been made, I, I think it's a good plan.
ECV is, was mentioned, had concern about runoff, they suggested some sort of imperial surface. Luke had told us what they intend to do there, let's talk real quick about shoreline guidelines, there was a statement submitted. Does the board feel what's being shown is adequate, other than we got a weight building?
Yeah. I, I, I think, yeah, what they have right now is in compliance with what we asked for before, I think.
Look, I had a little trouble, when I looked at the rendering and I looked at your landscape plan. I just, it wasn't until I looked at the rendering, I realized all those shrubs are on that slope. Tough to tell from looking at the landscape plan, I think that they should be more, I think they're existing shrubs, right?
The, the ones along the shoreline.
Yeah, going behind the wall there.
Yeah, all existing.
Okay, just make sure that's clear on the plan, because it. Okay, just make sure that's clear on the plan, because it, I just got the impression you had a couple bushes here and there and one tree, and that's what you're putting in, until I looked at the rendering, and that linked my eyes up as to what's actually there.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll say, the, the rendering only shows one of the proposed plantings, so there's, it's going to be even more dressed up from there.
I'm sure it'll be great.
Yeah, it'll look nice.
Yeah.
You seem like you really wanted another shade tree to survive over the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. And if you're just going to plant one tree, the chances are that that thing may get hammered in the next couple of years, and then you'll have to come in and start with a brand new, fresh tree, right? Would you be interested in planting a group of three trees with the option to reduce them down to one tree in ten or fifteen years? So that, go ahead, Lucas, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, we've got, we've got a grouping further to the south on the property that, and that helps shade the, the garage and the driveway side, so we've got some barternums and some witch hazels over there.
Yeah.
So, so I, I see your point, we don't, but I, I don't think that our landscaping architect would like the idea of just planting and, and hoping to get one, we're going to plant the right one, and if that doesn't, if that doesn't take, which, which does happen sometimes.
Be common.
Yeah, well.
Like, as long as you're aware of that, you know, I'm just trying to help the, the owners recognize that sometimes those tree plantings, you know, they just, they don't make it. So you want to get ahead of the curve, sometimes you want to plant in groups of odd numbers, threes, fives, sevens, in hopes that things will grow, but if you're okay with it and your architect is going to stand by that planting.
Okay, Jim Fletcher just had a question about the water service. The county sewer district stated a renovation permit would be required for the, the operation. And Chris Jensen just mentioned something about the silt vents being in the right location. So, with all those reviews, anyone in the audience? Neighbors or otherwise like to speak on this application? If not, we'll move on to our deliberation. This is a type two seater. Looking at it, a plan was last revised in November nineteenth. We're asking on, I will, if someone wants to make a motion, accept the bundle package seeker and site plan together.
So moved with the seven conditions under the site plan approval, CPN twenty-one dash zero eight two. And the secret type two action.
I'll second Ryan.
Any mention from Ryan, second from Bob? For the discussion? Not all favor? Okay, thank you both. Good luck.
Yep.
All right. We have back with us time, Mr. The Hollander, the Hollander for his property on County Route sixteen, and he's requested some lady single stage bike path approval for the construction of a new single family dwelling.
Yep.
Good evening, you live in there?
This is the fourth lot, lot four, it's the furthest one to the north on the parcel that we came to a couple of months back to discuss the access driveway. This lot's about one and a half acres. Size and our disturbance is delineated there, we can walk through the curly line and kind of circle the house site and in the subject that's the most above four tenths of an acre of disturbance on the site, the balance of one and a half acres will be remaining wooded. On that plan that you're looking at there too, the yellow area, thin oak slopes that are in that eighteen to twenty-five percent range, and then the blue slightly steeper in the area of the house, they're actually about six percent. And they get steeper as you get closer to County Road sixteen. I just wanted to kind of highlight what those two different colors are showing there. Those slopes really combine nicely to provide the walkout that we're providing here with our foundation plant, so the front of the house will be a grade arriving into the driveway, and then we have a soap along the side of the, the house that will come down to, to walk up that blends pretty well with the grades that are in that area. We have our conventional subject system shown on this plan too, it's in an area where slopes are less than fifty percent, that's the unshaded area, the white area. The other utilities will come from Wesley Grove, you can see, we've included them in our, in the survey, there is limit, but it only enough, that's necessary to extend the water, gas, electric from Wesley Grove. We provided some water quality on the site and in addition to along the, the access driveway. On this site lot four, we're providing about seven hundred square feet of filtration basin that's located on the garage side of the house slope, and a maintainable one on three from the driveway to the filtration basin. And then that filtration basin will overflow to the natural drainage course that comes down to Wesley Grove. Additionally, we saw some benefit to take care of some water quality along the access driveway, it's not highlighted on this plan, but it was included in an update to the access driveway plan, provided for a dry swell. Our site also includes some strong road control. So we're here to answer any questions, I'm really excited to get going on this.
Does your plan include the driveway in also? I mean, the road in on this plan?
It does not, we submitted a separate plan recall we were here.
That was the last one we did, yeah. Oh, that's great. Yeah, that, yeah. So is that, I was going to just ask if that road is now, is that completed now, or is it stabilized, or, I didn't go up to the lot yet?
We have a contractor online, but we were unable to get up here in October.
Okay.
We did modify the access driveway in a couple of ways, specifically for road schedule turnaround. And also, we made some modifications to the chewing passing area that will provide ninety degree turn.
If I may, as part of, as part of that approval, he was required to, to bring that road up to be fire code compliant. So that requires any driveway that extends beyond five hundred feet that will hold, that plan itself does now show, which would allow us ultimately, once all the conditions are addressed, to sign off and go through that process. That does show turnaround at the end of that driveway, as if there's no residential construction to occur, that would be fire code compliant and the full. That didn't trigger drainage requirements, but as part of that project, we tied this residential project to that, and that's why we're getting some of this additional drainage benefit that the applicant's willing to, to provide us, because ultimately, the two projects together triggered the need to do some of the stormwater, and that's what we're getting as a benefit to that. I, so I just wanted to clarify that the turn around at the end of the driveway is required as part of the other one, as if there's no other project there. When the house gets built, that turnaround will go away, we have the driveway connection to the house.
So a little bit of history real quick, it was a subdivision was approved, lots were created, four lots or?
Four, four.
You were in here a couple of months ago to get permission to do the driveway.
The road.
Did the subdivision include easements across those lots, if it did, right?
It did.
Clay, we picked that up.
But originally.
Originally did, and, and the data that subdivision is quite old, it's thousand and five. So they contemplated a driveway that ultimately, we just couldn't build it, we wanted to refine.
Right, I remember you did the change down at County Route sixteen, and you redid some drainage and moved some pipes and did that work at that, yeah, not yet, I guess.
No, we haven't, to start the site, we just through scheduling, the contractor was able to do it, so we're pressing with the approvals. And we'll follow the interstabilization rules of the road control standards that are in place.
So I guess the sequence will be, that work has to be done before anything's done on this one, right?
I guess, I was going to ask that, is there any prerequisites for the other approval that need to get done before this one can start or is complete?
Permitting process. Would be to have a driveway that extends from the road up, and that driveway has to be of certain, certain width and connect to meet the county roads, the county DBW's requirement, so that'll be part of the permitting process for the town.
But how about any of the other work that was done, the culverts down, down by County Road sixteen, and some of that stormwater maintenance?
Right, I mean, so procedurally, well, certainly, the board could require certain things to occur before other things to occur, but I, I just wanted to point out, the one item that would be required would be that driver would have to be in to accommodate the house.
Definitely, definitely, yeah, that's kind of a no brainer.
Yeah, I was trying to say is to put that driveway in, it's going to do the culvert work, because that was
At least at the, part of the road, at least at the south.
We had the neighbor across the street here, he used to, the water coming across, I think we were able to show him that this will actually relieve his
Right.
So it's got to be done, whether it's done before a CVO is issued for this house.
Well, particularly on the, yeah, the north end is, because I think you were doing something down by the road in the north end to divert the water. And if you're going to do, you know, well, I think of the north end too, wouldn't he?
Well, that's just north end, right there.
It was just the south end?
Where we intersect with the county.
Okay. But, but I think the guy, because you were talking about the neighbor, or the guy that was across the street was more at the north end, I think.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Wasn't he more at the north end?
So the driveway entrance and the neighbor kind of crossed one another?
Yeah.
He wanted the water to be diverted away from his house.
Right.
Towards the north.
To the north. Okay. And that's what we did, and it's going to go.
To skip that culvert by himself.
Okay, okay, yeah, I, I, yeah, okay. So I was just getting at, if we're, if we're going to start, you know, doing construction in the north part here, and does that cause any additional runoff that now requires to have something done, requires to have some of that stuff done down near County Road sixteen?
I don't know. The criteria for mitigation and runoff control, and he has directed it to the, the most appropriate culvert of the road, which is the northernmost culvert, away from that.
The problem, the problem down there, okay.
Well, and it, and it walks through the road's construction before we get in to the site deeper, so.
Okay, yeah, good.
Addressed that, and I think the concern is a really good one, and, you know, would be our intent to do nothing different than make sure that we work into the site as opposed to write the back of the site. And then have problems. I think your concern is keyed up in, you know, we'll take another look at those sequences and make sure that they're down there.
Okay.
But if our intent is, as we just discussed, to work into the site, stabilize, make sure we have excellent road control, and we've got that bypass, pass the eighteen inch culvert that was a concern to the county and the neighbor.
Yeah.
Would you object to, or requiring that that work be done as part of the initial approval prior to the issuance of the CVO for this particular lot?
No problem at all, okay.
Okay, because you're going to have a restriction on no CVO, and as the subject system is approved, so this would just be one other must do before you get your CVO.
Okay.
All right, anything else, board, I was telling Sean, it was nice, that NRI assessment, site assessment was nice to look at. All that. We talked about steep slopes.
I really like this shaded.
Yeah, that helps, that really looks really.
Everything is, on my plan, everything was in a box. When I looked at it on my computer, and every dimension, everything had a box, so you had all these extraneous.
Oh, like, almost like the CAD box?
Makes it hard to read sometimes.
Wow, I mean.
Got to get a new monitor truck.
Put that up on your sixty, seventy-five inch TVs, I mean. I'm a dinosaur.
Okay.
The, you do, how about, you have a, limits of disturbance on your plan, I know there was some concern from the ECB about the driveway might have been cut a little wider than it should have been, and, you know, don't, and future construction, make sure you minimize the amount of true removal. Don't even remove what you have to remove, so that does show a limit.
It does, it's limited to lot four, one point five acre lot, our disturbance limit is point four six.
I will tell you that our code enforcement officer comes out and checks the field with the plan, and it's a little bit disturbance is more the, than site you, so make sure you show what you want. And we are trying to minimize the amount of disturbance. Yeah, I thought it was there, again, I lost it, I lost it with all the kit.
Bundle chucker.
Yep.
Anybody in the audience virtually like to talk about this application? If not.
We're going to enter here.
Handle here, Mr. Chairperson.
Bundle the CPN twenty-one dash zero eight four, the Hollander design, and County Road sixteen, a secret type two action. Bundled with a single stage site plan approval resolution with.
I know.
Nine.
Nine. Point is, as referenced earlier, I think the plan's called a field access site plan. So I'll title it whatever the plan's called, but I have field access site plan improvements, including the driveway drainage to be installed in its entirety prior to the issuance of the CVO for lot four.
Okay, got a question, Ryan, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Man, a second, any other questions, Scott, how are you making out your? Have you planned into the DOH?
You got good perks.
In this location?
Remarkable, good for you. Should be nice to have sewers down there though. Too late, buddy.
All right, got a question, a second, anybody else on this application is not all favor?
Aye.
Thanks, guys. All right.
One more, yeah.
Okay, our last site plan application is for Mark's Engineering, representing June Herman, owner of property at thirty-five eighty, County Route sixteen. Single stage site plan approval, tear down, rebuild a one-story accessory structure.
That's not it.
Brennan, you got the floor?
That's not it.
I'm going to, I'm going to let Peter Sarkis take on this one, guys, I'll be here for the answer questions, so.
Oh, okay. Give it the eight thing. Peter?
Hello?
Barely.
Okay, great, yeah, um, would you like me to share my screen here?
No, no, that's good. No, we'll put up, you tell us what.
Okay, great, yeah, I'll wait for you to get it up, unless you can see it right now.
Peter, you want to give us your name for the record?
Yeah, my name's Peter Sarkis, I'm with Mark's Engineering, I'm representing June Herman. This is a pretty straightforward site plan here, it's, it's now on County Road sixteen. It's a tear down, rebuild for an accessory structure. It's um it's now on county road sixteen, it's a tear down, rebuild for an accessory structure. They've got a dilapidated uh one-story cottage there that they'd just like to replace. Some minor other additions to that too, but yeah, it'll be the same exact footprint, so right on the lakeside of county road sixteen. And beyond that, we're just going to add new water and verify that the septic is good down there, but um. Yeah, so it's really simple, very small, small plot here, it's only going to be. It's going to be a pretty small building, same footprint though. Um would you like to go to the next page so I can just talk about some of the? Some of the work to be done, so what we'll be doing here will be uh having a s- a silt fence to block any erosion or sediment from getting into the lake. There will be a little bit of regrading to make sure that this building is elevated, so we're not having to deal with any flood damage. Beyond that, just really replacing or adding a water line that will connect into the house, it'll be bored under county road sixteen. And uh gonna make sure that that sand line is still all good to go. Uh and just to reiterate, it is the same exact footprint, so we're not going to change anything in that sense.
Okay.
And Chuck, Chuck, if I could add one thing to it, I'm sorry. Chuck, per per the zoning law determination, um the only reason it's been referred to the planning board is for the soil erosion sediment control. Because it goes over the thresholds for disturbance in this, in the RLD zone, so.
Wouldn't it also be in the RLD? Um tear down rebuilds are also subject to site plan approval, but you not apply for site plan approval?
Or is this?
This is.
Yeah, yeah.
So don't you also want site plan approval right now? Not just soil control?
Right, we.
Have to come back for it.
No, it it requires site plan approval for soil erosion set of control, right?
Well, it requires site plan approval.
For the entire structure.
And a permit for soil erosion settlement control, I don't understand.
You know, I don't, I lost, I thought, I thought I had this thing figured out as what we're doing.
So the ZE, the zoning law determination that was provided, it says why it was going to the point where just for the rest, since the site plan approval, site plan approval is required, which was the application.
This is.
That we reviewed, for development in the residential lake district, which exceeds one thousand square feet, are such thresholds that would require a permit to be issued for chapter one sixty-five soil erosion settlement.
Oh, so that's the trigger, one of the two triggers.
To to require.
Okay.
Okay, so we we know why you're here, uh the existing building, what 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 is, and I guess there was some question, is this, does it have sewer, does it have watered?
What's it being used for?
Is the floor rotted now, what was it used for?
Is it a residence?
Yeah, it's a residence, the cottage or is it an accessory structure?
Yeah, so it's just a cottage, uh it's not a dwelling, there's, there's nowhere to sleep in there, um currently, there is a sanitary line. And I don't know much about the water line, but I'm assuming it's there, uh I've spoken to the Hermans and they told me that the floor is unstable, they're having issues in the lawn with the fill. Um and overall, the structure is just very outdated and it's not really usable to them anymore, so they'd like to really just revamp that and make sure it's all structural and sound.
Okay, what what is their intended purpose of the new one, are they, do they want to uh? Put in a full bathroom, have a sleeping quarters in there, that somebody can spend the, some guests can uh spend the night on there, what what do they intend to use it for in future?
Uh it's not living space, it's not, it's gonna be a family room with a bathroom, um more of a recreational building.
You know, the Hermans live directly across the street, but um they don't intend on making it livable in any way.
Peter, you came out.
Sorry.
Oh, can you hear me?
Okay, try again.
Yeah, so the Hermans do live across the street and they, that's where they live, they reside there, but they do not plan on making the new structure livable. Uh no, not a dwelling, no sleeping space, um just simply to have a little cottage down by the water.
Could we call it a bath house?
Yeah, we can't call it a cottage, yeah, recreational structure.
Sorry.
Not a cottage.
Something like bath. Just make it an enclosed bath house.
So what's, what they're proposing is okay with zoning?
Yes, yes.
That use is not an issue.
And I met with the Hermans, uh and they absolutely do not want this as a second dwelling.
Okay.
Yeah.
Airbnb.
You're okay with how it's gonna be used, so we're we're over the use issue, so let's talk about the site plan itself.
Wait, can I just ask, sure, and this isn't directed to the Hermans, but it's been an issue found in the past that these tend to turn into cottages. Not with the person who comes in and says, it's not gonna be, the next guy, the next guy after that, to have a kitchen, you'd need.
Yeah, there's no kitchen.
There's no kitchen in this.
But is there a way to prevent the ability to build a kitchen through minimizing electrical service?
Or gas, well, look.
Is it gonna be heated?
Yes.
Uh huh.
It's got plumbing in it, it's gonna have to be heated, right, it must.
Well, except it's on the lakeside, wouldn't you just turn the plumbing off?
Yeah, drain it.
Cabana.
And you can call it a seasonal structure, I guess, if you're like.
Is it gonna be insulated?
Yes.
The Hermans told me it wasn't when we heated, when I met with them last.
Sorry. Stand corrected.
Oh, well, so who's right, Sean, the Hermans are right or?
Yes, the Hermans are right.
Okay, no heat.
No heat, no insulation?
We haven't got that part, Chris.
Well, that's the other thing, um we had asked.
You might want insulation that.
If we check the PRC records, we had asked for elevations of this uh new structure, uh I don't recall seeing any.
No.
Um did you uh supply shoreline guidelines?
No.
Peter, all for uh this uh structure, I realize it's it's a replacement, but it's something new.
There should be elevations that we were seeing.
I saw photos.
The photos of the existed, yeah, but not a rendering of the new one. The that I can recall.
We submitted architectural plans.
I'm sorry, what'd you submit, you submitted photos, right, of the existing?
We, we submitted architectures.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Uh Kim, you wanna pull up?
Can you see if they're there?
This is an improvement, though.
I don't see.
We have up there now, right?
I would, I would imagine.
Certainly, you're calling it, it's on that or.
Nope.
But I see something with.
Yeah, it's just rebuilt, there's no big deal here. This is not a big.
Oh, building sketch?
Why?
On the bottom?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just brought it on, it's a good example of.
Something that evolved.
Something that happens a lot.
Sure, absolutely.
But that's illegal, right, I mean, the Hermans would, if, I mean. But so maybe we could, I mean, are we okay to just add plans, Mr. Marks, to the, to the?
Okay.
I just to note that this is not a dwelling.
They're here.
That's fine.
Is that cool, I mean, you know, like, we're looking at it and stuff, I mean, there's bath houses that are really extravagant, you know what I mean, like, this, I see this as an improvement on the lake and it's a good project.
Violation of a condition of site plan approval is a violation of the town code, so it's not just a naked condition, it said, shall not be used or handled well.
Yeah, that's fine, you okay with that, Brian?
I'm A okay with that.
I mean, you know, like.
I'm fine with that, yeah. I'm over the use. I'm just trying to, let's see what it's gonna look like once I say that, so this is the uh, this is the elevation.
Yeah.
This is the elevation, uh boy, it would sure look nice to have a couple bushes, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, man, that's 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 pretty sterile looking right now, does you, you mentioned a landscape plan?
Uh we haven't done a landscape plan for this, Chuck, if if your board's up for it, um we could throw in a condition for six native shrubs to be planted along the front of the structure.
I mean, they they don't have to go up to the bottom of the.
Right.
That's it, either side, it's still.
Two to three feet height, there's not a lot of room for landscaping on the site.
Nope.
Just something that's not, yeah, you know what I mean, like, just something that's not against New York State, um. Uh the the invasive plants, species, you know what I mean?
Thinking, you know, uh uh a like a rush, you know, like a like a grass is along the front.
Mm-hmm.
Like a brown rush.
On the east. On the east, east elevation underneath the cat.
One, so the last phase of the road.
Hi, yeah.
Oh, I don't, I don't give this any more information.
Say it's kind of a.
I'm just trying to, as far as complying with the shoreline guidelines, I I think it'd be much more compliant if it had the six shrubs, so thank you.
Okay, we'd be glad to put those on there for you. I, I'll be honest with you, Chuck, I I'll be honest with you, we went into this, um knowing that we may need site plan approval, but it was, we were thinking of it as more of a just. Complete replacement of the structure that's that's just failing, and it and we tried to leave out as a little bit of detail, just to, you know, simplify the project, but be glad to add a. Condition for the plantings at the front.
Well, you know us, Brandon, we like detail.
Yep.
All right, uh.
I got a question.
Uh Bob, of course.
Brandon, uh are you gonna do any work to the wall right behind that house?
Um if I recall correctly, I think it's actually a slope, right, it's a, it's a, it's a vegetated slope.
Kind of.
Yeah, the it's well planted with a bunch of lilies and uh actually just lilies, yeah.
And how about your uh sea wall that essentially blocks, cinder blocks, blocks, is that?
Do you have, do you have the picture of the front of the house there?
Yeah, the photos, Kim.
I think they added those to the.
If you get a photo of three, that's the one I'm talking about.
Yeah.
That's the. That's the south side of the house. Oh, yeah, where all the blocks are added.
Yeah, they put them, they kind of suck them.
Brian's right, it will be an improvement, that we just wanna make sure it looks a little better. That's our job.
I know.
Right there.
Yeah, that's, there's the sea wall.
I haven't even seen this yet, they must have added the blocks in there due to the flooding in the past, recent, most recent flooding. Uh because I recall the the concrete wall is, is being a structural, pretty solid break wall, but I I have not seen the blocks yet, I'll be honest with you.
Concrete underneath the blocks, okay, I thought it was just a block.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna elevate the building above floods, so it will be elevated from where it is now.
That's good. Keeping this one.
So the blocks right now are to keep the lake.
From.
Out of the building.
Right.
Yeah, I I've never even seen those, I'll be honest with you.
They look super.
And if you, uh Bob, Bob has a question about the back of the building, was it?
Yeah, it is just a, it's a slope, I thought there was like a hard wall there, no, and I'm just looking.
Okay, you're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Alrighty.
So I I guess I got just a general comment on the. Kinda, I don't know, overall principle of this, of what we're trying to do here. This would be considered a existing non-conforming dwelling, would it be, would it, would it or not?
Or what, it would be an accessory structure.
Which are allowed.
Which are.
In the RLD on the lakeside of a two-piece parcel.
Right, like a.
Okay.
House, kind of, yeah, well.
Accessory.
Accessory structure.
And what? What size, what size or what percentage of that lot coverage could an accessory, what where I'm coming from, thi- this looks like it's, it's, the entire parcel is the house. And then there's a, you know, a little bit of break, grass and break wall around there, would that, would that be something that would be allowable to be built today?
No.
You know, I didn't think so, that's where, that's where I was coming from, it's a, you know, non-conforming, some non-conforming, I don't know what it'd be.
Right, this was built, I think, in thirty-three.
Could have been.
Yeah.
So. Thirty, nineteen thirty?
Yep.
So I I I don't think there's anything we can do about it now, given our current regular laws and and so, but.
Laws allow.
Allow for a replacement of the structure.
In time.
Yep.
Of non-expansion, they wanted.
Yeah, alright.
A one square foot bigger, they'd need to obtain a variance from the zoning or the field expansion.
Which they're not doing, they're just living it within the same footprint, so they can do that. I mean, I'm 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 just wondering if that's something that the ordinance boards should look at in the future, is that if we do a total tear down, we're essentially rebuilding, in my mind. And that, you know, there's, there could be some laws within a town that said, you know, if you're gonna rebuild, take a percentage, eighty percent, ninety percent, maybe it's just a hundred. That um you have to then abide by the new current law, current statutes within that area. I'm just, I'm just bringing that up as as something that that the town might consider.
Lighten the match, rub them like.
Love that so much.
I know, it's, I know, it's coming across that way.
You came across very eloquently, you said that very good.
Cuz I just wonder. Is that where we wanna go?
You're spot on.
You raised a very good point.
Is that where we wanna go, that's all, I don't know.
Nobody loves to have zoning laws, but this is my experience, and I'll I'll tell you why it doesn't get changed in most towns. Uh nobody loves to have zoning codes applied to their property, everybody just loves to have it applied to their neighbors' property.
Right.
When you tell me I can't, on my property, applicants don't like that. Generally, reasonable restrictions are accepted by most many applicants, when you can't tell me I can't rebuild what I already have.
Hmm.
And make it better, applicants tend to lose their minds. Um and I'm not talking about Kennedy one in particular, um but that that can change the political, you know, that people love with their property rights.
I can understand, I can understand.
So that's why in most municipalities, you don't see that restriction that you just recommended, eighty percent reduce, reducing the non-conforming. The non-conforming, there's also some kinds of legal arguments about it.
And the, and the, and the, if you don't allow them to do it right, they're gonna do it one piece at a time.
Yeah.
And overtime, right, and it's really, this is really a maintenance project, I mean, th- they didn't maintain the building, so now they have to replace it. And it has to be raised, because it's in the flood, but i- if they would have maintained it over the years, and maybe Jack did at one point, they wouldn't be here.
Yeah, hey. Did my last goodbye.
It was so awesome.
How's that, how's that?
And and related to that, I think it was one of Brennan's projects too, is he had brought up the point about going up.
Yeah, oh, yes, I know.
That's something, I think, that's something the ordinance committee. Just adding square footage by.
By going up and, yeah, okay.
So anyway, getting back to this uh application, uh anybody in the audience, uh neighbors? People drive by the house and wanna say anything regarding this application?
No.
They just happen to be. They just happen to be not used. Alright, um, we were, we did not receive or not required to get anything from the county plane work. That was the condition, the current structure is, uh, Chris Jensen. Uh, Chris said that there has to be an existing condition plan that was brought up with P R C. Is that something you can do, Brennan?
It's provided, guys, it's there.
Alright, babe, I'm just going by what Chris said. That was a P R C, maybe it could have been provided in the meantime.
Okay.
Uh, fire too will be added, of course, regarding structures. Uh, you know, sewer district said no, no record of a lateral, uh, so if you are going to put a sanitary facilities in and you're gonna have a lateral, I guess you have to talk to the, uh, sewer district. Uh, E C B, uh, they spent a considerable amount of time on this, I don't have their, uh.
Yeah, I think a lot of that was.
I think it was just.
Secondary building.
Secondary, how, was it a house versus a, yeah.
Concerns there?
Yeah, there were.
But I think that was a lot of that was, was that, what was the use? Was it a house or was it a?
Yeah, it was the use.
I think that was a lot of what they had done there too.
Okay, we appreciate their review, but anything that we should include in our deliberations? Okay. Uh. Elevations you showed us, shoreline guidelines, you gotta put some shrubs in the building, okay. Alright, ready, type two, secret designation. Someone down the line wants to bundle this up.
Alright. I will do it now that it sucks, since I made that comment, my last action here.
Your last action.
Yep, uh, I make a motion to accept the type-two action and approve a single-stage site plan, C P N twenty-one dash zero eight seven, Mark's Engineering, representing June and Roger Herman with, uh, seven.
I have eight.
Eight now.
The seventh is that, uh, this is not to be used as a housing dwelling.
Oh, yeah.
And I know it's to be added to the site plan for the signatures, and then eight was native shrubs, six in total, at two to three feet in height along the east side, lake side, to be provided on the bank.
I believe, uh, Mr. Vice Chairman State Chuck has.
Question and also comment. The, the idea of native, though, that's gonna limit you, Brennan, do you just wanna say non-invasive according to New York State?
Yes, non-invasive according to New York State.
I mean, cause native, you're gonna get.
Yeah.
Then after a second, I have a question for you.
I'll second.
Okay.
I did. Yeah.
So I just wanna make sure that, I just read the E C B comments, the lake erosion, you're comfortable with the erosion, uh, for being provided, Lance?
To be clear, I have, this plan wasn't required to be recorded at M R B driven, so it wasn't reported to us, so I don't have a comment letter on that, but it has to go through Chris Jensen's review and town staff review before it off on the good side.
Brennan, we need to keep the soil out of the lake.
And for.
Yeah, they got those.
They've got the.
You know what I mean? Like, this is gonna be, this is, people are gonna see this project every single day, they're gonna be, their eyes are gonna be on it, right?
I hear ya.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
Who does?
Oh, God. You really, you gotta make sure you do this right. So, if, if we're okay with that, I just wanna make sure that we, we talk about that and make sure that we capture that no soil goes into the lake, we got a motion in a second.
Yep.
Okay, uh, I'm sorry, is there an E N S requirement for this? Do you, you have an E N S? Yeah, there it is, okay, so there's a shirt. So, yeah, so he will be required to, uh, control, uh, from original.
Yep, there's a surety, and then the.
Pay for it.
Sewers on that.
Okay, any other questions? It's not all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, here none, or she passes. Thanks, Peter and Bren.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
You do, happy turkey day.
Brennan, have you got a minute to hang around?
I do.
Oh, maybe, I wanna see if he can, what he thinks about some of the events that we brought up.
We get your part of the agenda, Chris, you can bring that up.
What's that, guys?
Hang around a sec, Brennan, we'll, we'll get to you.
No, I'll reach out to you tomorrow. Never mind.
I, I'd be glad to talk, guys, if you, if you're.
I just wanna do the minutes, take care of some, uh, some housekeeping, uh, few minutes on November nine.
Sounds good.
So moved.
I got a motion from Brennan.
Second. Second from Gary.
All favor.
Aye.
Okay, we have no referrals from the board. Okay, D B A code enforcement, Chris doesn't, there's nothing going to Chris, no money to spend. Uh, we have.
Ninety-day extension.
As I just said, Brennan, what's happening with the A T L out on Anderson? What's their issue?
Um, well, we just got a letter from Lance saying he's good with it. Uh, now we just gotta get the paperwork in there, they need a building designed to pull the building from it.
Can you do it in the next ninety days?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Dang it.
Second we got.
Yep.
All favor.
Aye.
Okay, uh, call our attorneys. So, I was gonna recommend, as a town planner, and your town engineer and myself have been talking about this for a while now, it needs to be redressed every so often, um, uh, deadlines. It ties into a conversation we could also have right now, uh, if everyone could review the rules of procedure, so that at your December meeting, you can tell your staff what you would, if you'd like any changes, so that we present them to you at your January organizational meeting. One of the things in there is deadlines. We've gotten to a point where a lot of, uh, applicants are submitting, uh.
After the sound.
Yep.
When, when you guys have the opportunity to do it, but they're on the agenda, and it's still getting treated, there's discussion, there's comments, there's back and forth, and it's killing your time.
Mm-hmm.
It's killing the applicant's time, um, and their professionals who are paid to be here, but don't necessarily need to be. Um, and, and the applicants who did submit in time, and the reason I wanted Brennan to, uh, maybe just provide a comment, um, one of our most prolific applicants. What's the reason? Why, why is everything coming at the last minute, and you are by no means the only engineer who's doing it?
I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna throw Lance under the bus.
Yes.
I love it.
So, what typically happens is, as, as designers, they're waiting to get as many comments as they possibly can from a lot of entities, including M R B's comments, which sometimes don't come to them until the week before or days before the meeting. I'm being a little bit flexible with my times, Brennan, but let's just go with that for tonight. But what they try to do is they're trying to demonstrate to the board that, that they're addressing comments received. And so that's where the, I think, a lot of times, and it's not just Canandaigua, I see it at all the board meetings I go to, every municipality has a very similar concern. They get something that really is just a revision of what they've already received, attempting to address those comments, but you're not reviewing it, that you haven't had a chance to look at it. I guess there's two parts to that. One is this, I believe you're relying on staff to answer those questions for you. So therefore, regardless of what that plan does or does not show, it's still the very much the same plan that we had, but it's being addressed to address all comments received today, whether it's from highway water, water and sewer, and so pretending M R B group, or department, and so on. Which it looks like are due the Tuesday, the week before the meeting, the comments are due a week before the meeting, is that accurate? Comments are being requested to be provided, I believe, the Tuesday before the Tuesday board meeting.
So one from Jim Fletcher from M R B, from.
Everybody else.
So if, if the applicant wanted to address it or provide it, typically what I'd suggest to them is to provide a response letter, hold off on issuing revised plans. Obviously, I don't, I don't wanna interrupt what they wanna do, because they're, because they might not have a reason why they're trying to show the drainage improvement that might be controversial, whatever. But typically, we suggest to provide response letters, because that, that demonstrates to the board and to us that you're willing to work through those comments as opposed to submitting revised plans that might not make the timeframe, because really, that Thursday, if everything's due Thursday, and they, and they get my letter on time the Tuesday, then it doesn't leave a lot of time to make those revisions. So, that's, I think, where the fuzziness that we typically see in the Brennan's defense is why sometimes these things come in the Friday. Now, they're trying to make that submission, but they just didn't have quite enough time to do it.
Because you're saying that, that the comments, for example, from Jim Fletcher, for example.
Yep.
Are due the Tuesday before our meeting. So they're, they're, they're due, then we turn around, staff turns around, gets those comments to the engineer, and they're trying to scramble to get to, to make those.
They submit something.
To submit them, and, and they only have four days, three days to do that.
They wanna show that they're willing to address those comments, and so they're attempting to do so.
So that they can be successful, have a successful application on the following Tuesday.
We're giving.
And, and I, I'll be honest with you, so like, if the comments are, are minor and very tactical in nature, I don't see it as a concern for the planning board as much as it is for the town engineer. Um, and, and so we'll bring it up to the town engineer, this town engineer saying, yeah, we're, we've reviewed your comments, we're, we're satisfied that we can accommodate them, uh, with some minor revisions to the plan. Um, and, and quite frankly.
That typically is a condition on our thing.
Right.
Yeah, so.
This operation statement of comments of Lance's, the comments of it, from earlier tonight, just, just trying to get it straight in my head.
The, oh, for the construction.
The radio.
It's, we had asked for it weeks ago.
Okay, sometimes.
And then I reminded Brennan, and, and he, I mean, he's been, you know, very kind of, but it's just the ti- the time is.
It's, it's, yeah, it's fine.
I wouldn't, yeah, I, I wouldn't have asked him to stay on it, we were trying to throw him on.
Well, I mean, there's also.
I know he works hard.
He's just an engineer, though. There's, the applicants are the people that own it. He's gotta deal with the owner. Right, you're just a lawyer, you're just a lawyer, so, you know what I mean, like.
But, I think there's two things, I think, one is, is, I think it's important for the applicants and the design engineers to understand that the board isn't necessarily requiring revised plans to be submitted prior to the board meeting.
Right.
That, that we're trying to, that, the whole point of the meeting is to go through those comments and come to, uh, an understanding of it. Obviously, we would suggest providing response letters to what has been received from outside entities, so that it does demonstrate and give you guys the ability to say, okay, well, yep, they're gonna address the watering. I'm gonna address this. Now, with that being said, I do think Chris is spot on with, we do need to have a hard deadline, so that if there are to submit revised information regardless of whatever, based on comments received or things that were just missed or changes because the applicant wants to make a change, those have to be submitted to you in a timely manner for the board to have a chance to review them. I think, I hope that makes sense. So, it looks like there's a Tuesday P R C meeting, October nineteenth, and comments from M R B group are due back Tuesday, November sixth. So, almost a full month to get your comments. Is that necessary? And I'm just, I'm asking. So, to be, no, I mean, sometimes it does, and sometimes, so, the town staff, when they get through P R C, revised plans gotta get submitted to them. So, to answer your question, yes, that's plenty of time for M R B group to get comment letters out, when there's forty applications between everybody that's going on, twenty with the town, or this and that, some of whom are large, some of whom are not so large, based on revisions being made, that time usually is about a two-week window. So, within the two-week window, M R B group should and, and has to comply with that timeframe, so that we're giving the applications enough time to respond.
But it can't, but it can't be short, you don't think?
I would, I don't, I don't think we should shorten.
But we.
Not just M R B group, that's.
No.
That's, that's everyone's deadline.
One month, one, they get one month.
Well, it's not always one month. It's a lot of times, it's a month because of the timeframe, but it's not always, sometimes it's a two weeks, sometimes it's three weeks, it all depends on turn, sometimes we push the applications to the first meeting in the month, at which point we have less than, uh, two weeks to do a review and turn the product, you guys.
Can I, can I ask a question as politely as possible? As the town of Canandaigua outgrown, um, the need to subcontract engineering, or should we have an in-house engineer?
No, I, I guess I'm asking the lawyer, I guess I'm asking Chris lawyer.
Having an in-house engineer would.
If you, you'll need two or three.
If you can, if you.
Yeah.
If, if you wanna bring out our B group in-house and can figure out a way to fund that, go ahead and do that.
Yeah.
I think you should make Lance an offer.
Brennan, I got to.
You were a town engineer.
I was a town.
It's a great idea.
The municipality of about twenty-five thousand. So, I mean, that size community, and it justified its own in-house person.
It's a great idea.
I'm just asking, just for, for.
But there's some reasons why not, you don't get all the services you get.
Yeah, you, oh, yeah, I'm just asking to, you know.
But based on your current.
Also, you, you guys have quite a bit of applications.
We do have an engineer. You have Chris Jensen.
That's what I was just about to say. The other thing is you can't charge the applicants back.
So, we would take the hit.
For the engineer's work.
But part of the, the part of the issue.
But not having the applicants chip in. Lance doesn't, Lance doesn't really cost the town a dime.
I know, but sometimes, but there is, there is, there is considered, there is considered, but for the record, John, there are, there are concerns about that part, like the town, the taxpayers in our town, chargebacks, yes. Some people, you know, they, they'll, that, there's sticker shock on that.
There is.
There is sticker shock on that, and there's some people that, um, aren't aware of that, you know, like they go and they just want a simple project, and then next thing you know, they, there's you know, they, they, the fee is only fifty bucks or a hundred bucks, but then all of a sudden, six, seven hundred bucks for an engineer.
They weren't aware of that they're live.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about, I'm talking about general neighborhood people that are not aware of what, what a, uh, addition will cost, what putting in a driveway will, you know what I mean, simple site plan things.
And they find out when they come to the town, but.
They find out.
They don't know.
You know, and all of a sudden, you know, something that was gonna be only fifty or a hundred bucks, now it turns into seven, eight hundred thousand bucks. That's how you hit the sum.
No, well, I think first, if it's a simple application, most, most of those don't even come to us.
Right.
Lance has a review, though. He prepares the, the options for you.
Now, the lakefront, because of the lake is one of the reasons why we typically get a lot of the single-family from Canandaigua, but most of the single-family outside of lake, we don't, we don't get. Now, all commercial projects do require, but those are obviously larger projects, large subdivisions come through, but that, whether I was here or somebody else was here, that would be the, the same process regardless.
Right.
And it probably wouldn't go to your town engineer either, right? Cause.
Hey, guys. I got bedtime coming up here, so I don't wanna be short, but, uh, I, I do wanna say one thing, is, um, as far as the review process grows in the town of Canandaigua, it's definitely not broken, it's definitely working perfectly fine. I mean, the board just has to understand that there's some technical adjustments that need to be made, um, when the town enge- town engineer reviews it. And, you know, those might not be even submitted to the town planning board for review, but it's, that's just part of the process. The planning board, I don't think, is their tasked with reviewing the technical aspects as much as they are the use and, and what, what's proposed.
That's right.
Well, yeah.
Absolutely true.
Yeah.
And I don't think.
But I mean, we, you know, I, I view it as, we come here, so one of the things, one of our responsibilities, or what I do is I review what Lance has done, I review what the E C B has said, or, you know, and, and sometimes I look at that and I say, hey, that's a big point, I wanna make sure we address that. And we just make you talk about it.
That's right.
And then there's others.
That's great.
That's like, uh, you know, okay.
Well, that's, that's really the function of the planning board.
Right.
On the objective end of that, is confirming that, that.
Yep.
Confirming and coordinating through staff that all those reviews have been.
Have been done.
You can't, you can't judge architecture or engineering.
Right, we don't have the background.
That's why I think, I think some, some, yeah. So, Brennan, move on. That's why I think we require or suggest that response letters be provided, because it does demonstrate the applicant's willingness to address that in a manner that would be satisfactory to staff, or something, you know, it gives us that, that, that point of conversation.
Yeah, but I, I think, I think it's also, yeah, thanks, Brennan.
Thank you, Brennan.
Alright, guys, thank you.
Have a good night. Send your bill to Chris.
But, but, but to, but to continue this, though, to your, to your point, you know, I, I, I think it's also incumbent on the board, though, to review those comments and say which ones we feel are really important and which ones aren't. So, the, the fact that, now, now the most, I mean, all your comments, I'm not saying half of them are not valid or anything, but to, to have the applicant or something, go ahead and all of a sudden redo his plans based on comments that we haven't discussed yet, I'm not sure that's the right process.
Except if it's like, your drainage should go this way.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna say no.
So, so I think what they do is just, they give you a response, they don't give you redo the plans, I mean.
Well, but they are sometimes redoing the plans, and that's when he says, yeah, oh, one came in last week.
Something that the engineer knows should be changed. To be clear, the plans that we're talking about tonight wasn't because of M R B.
Nope.
Right.
Yeah.
That wasn't the issue. Lance, nobody's upset.
He's like, man, he's looking at me, dude, I'm just saying.
These were good, these were well.
Well, I guess I'm getting to the point where, you know, if they are trying to change and give us a last minute change to the plan, just to address comments, we should don't, don't, there's no need to do that, because I think that just gets our antennas up, uh-oh, what are they trying to do here, are they slipping something in here that we haven't seen?
Lance, can you put that in your letter?
So maybe just, no.
As long as it's in Lance's letter, we just say it's conditional on.
Which we already said, yeah.
It's fine, we don't have to listen to it.
I think, I think there's a way for us, at P R C, to acknowledge that to them as well, that upon receipt of comments, that the planning board isn't necessarily expecting revised plans, but if you are gonna revise a plan, they're due on this day.
On it.
You know, we do expect and hope, or we would politely request that, uh, response letter be provided to comments received today, so that the board can have that and, and have an opportunity to have that dialogue. I think that's beneficial, I, I, well, you get comments from Jim Fletcher, and I think it would be good to have a response letter to some of those comments, or from M R B group, or from, uh, Kevin O'Beatty, or whomever responds, I think it's good to have that dialogue that shows that, that at this point, uh, that they're asking for, they're willing to address it, you know?
I think a lot of times, it's, it's the applicant, the homeowner, makes a change to the plan.
That's.
Yes.
And they submit a new set of plans the day of.
That's, whoa, wait a minute.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think all of it is.
No. No, not at all.
I think it's twenty-five percent delayed, you know, tough to get comment letter response.
Or maybe something from the county, maybe something from the sewer district.
That's, that's what I'm saying about Brennan being the engineer, like, he's only in the middle, right? He's, he's talking to the, oh, we like white sagging, oh, for God's sakes, now I gotta go back to the planning board and tell me what, what, you know what I mean, like, there's all times, so I think sometimes, you know, we might hammer on the engineers, but man, they're just representing their applicant, you know?
Yep.
But I guess, in response to what you're asking, I follow Chuck's lead, like, you, if there's something that we can make an improvement on process-wise, that you feel is appropriate for it to be considered in January, you know, let's do it.
Be awful work.
Well.
I'll rewrite the rules.
Should, would it be easier to have a rules and procedure in a paper form, like we did with the senior relay, for you to have a hard copy to look at?
It's online, right?
Yeah. Well, it is.
I just saw.
Usually, me, I'll change.
Can, John, can you take a quick look online and make sure that the, the posted, the posted is the most current? Cause what I just found on my phone was two thousand seventeen.
And that may be.
It may be the most current, but.
I don't think it is, because when, when we came up with those.
And the, the D restricted areas, and I went online to look at that, I was like, oh, this is the most recent.
That's not weird.
I think your phone is old.
Masks.
Your phone. iPhone five, you're still using it five, flip phone.
Take the shoe off.
Um, to get this.
No, it's fine, it's fine.
I think, we want square away before Gary leaves.
We can't, we can't, we can't, Gary leave until.
You think that's the most?
No, it isn't, you did one in January.
Did one in January.
Yeah, we did it in twenty twenty.
And twenty-one.
All right, John's gonna.
Email that's twenty.
That's two years old.
Well, we did twenty-one as well.
Yeah, we did one. Twenty-one. First it.
Yep. I must've been missing that day, I don't remember.
Oh, wait.
First January, maybe.
Almost two years.
We're going in twenty-two.
It was.
Stupid mask.
I know, I'm just doing it.
Alright.
We, just, until we get it straightened out with rules and procedures, I'm gonna recommend to the development office that the P R C minutes and correspondents say, this is your deadline, if you don't.
Then you don't go on.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna address it.
And the development.
I think, uh, John puts that in the minutes.
He does.
Yeah, okay.
Um, but the development office is gonna start making the decision.
Compared to who?
Uh, leaving it up to the board or the chair at the board meeting.
I feel like the chairperson should set the agenda, though.
Well.
After P R C, it's, it's set in stone, John puts it in, based on the, uh, on the schedule.
Yes, and currently, if, if the application meets the application requirements, P R C sets it on an agenda, that's how the agenda's getting distributed out, and then distributed by, by staff and someone. If something is missing, technically, it shouldn't even be on the agenda, it'll get pulled in, won't, won't make it on. I think what we're talking about is those applications that are good to go, that are on the agenda, then, that have changes along the way that have to be reviewed internally to make a determination whether or not they've submitted on time or not. And I think the development office needs the, the leverage of being able to say, no.
Nope, not, not good, not ready yet.
So they learn their lesson, not, all has Chuck, who is a nicer guy than me, and might say yes.
I, I, I understand that, but I also understand the importance of the chairperson having the authority and, and retaining that authority to say, yeah, I, I get what you're saying, but I've kind of represented the public too in the town. The staff may be treating this applicant for this way for the right reasons, but as a downside person that has an outside perspective, maybe they should still retain that authority to say, well, this one's okay, no, you know what I mean, like, is that, isn't that common throughout the townships?
I don't feel that, that, that is a problem, the problem is deciding which agenda goes on.
Yeah, that's with me.
If we follow that, new, new application, second meeting, uh, revisions or first meeting, we're gonna wind up with very light first meetings and very heavy second.
Well, it seems like you're, we're, it seems like you're handling that sort of distributing it.
Doug just, Doug pulled on the reins a little bit, and said, get, get back on your schedule. And I, I said, well, Doug, if, if we got a simple application, subdivision, doesn't require a county review, doesn't require Z B A, let's, let them do the first meeting, it's a new application.
We just went to that model.
So, that's where I'm taking some of the courage.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I'm saying, and, and that's what I'm trying to get across, like, cause you're in those meetings, we're not, you know what I mean, so I wanna defer.
The P R C, it's, it's, it's three weeks after the P R C meeting. Changes are. Where the applicants are sending stuff on Tuesday, the development office should say, great, thanks, we'll put this on the next agenda, and it should be deleted from the agenda, so we don't spend twenty-five minutes screwing around.
Right.
Getting arguments from me.
Well, we, just an example, we have, uh, Dish wants to go on on the tower, or the existing tower. They monkeyed around, monkeyed around, and didn't get us a fee, got us a plan, they came straggling in. I said, no, you're going in June, and it's just not fair to staff to.
Yeah, right, that's great, good job.
Well, right.
It's good.
Maybe just a note to the chair, so the chair can override it, if need be, with the understanding that you'll trust the staff's discretion at some good call.
I, I, and I, I think to Chuck's.
The society just had been informed, so.
Yeah, that's what, well, and, and say, whoa, I don't agree with that, but, you know, you have a chair.
To Chuck's point, though, we, remember when Tom and Dick were on the board, we went to that first week, meeting is gonna be only these. Second meeting was gonna be only these, before that, several years ago, we, it didn't matter. You know, and once we did that, there would be, there was months that we'd have very light agenda in the beginning, and a very heavy meeting. So I, I appreciate that you're willing to spread it out, I mean, that shows a little bit of flexibility for the town, flexibility for the staff.
None of it's easy stuff, like applicants like it, you have to wait a month.
Yeah, you know, I appreciate, I appreciate you do that, I think that's.
A lot of towns, uh, most towns, including much busier towns than Canadagua, uh, have one, one planning board meeting come up.
Oh, just wow, yeah.
Not busier, but bigger towns than Canadagua. It was just. We hear it till midnight.
Oh, we, I know.
Divided up, I mean, even, it's like, they still, like, still got eleven applications to go through, including some of them.
Well, when we started doing site plans, that picked it up, but we dropped it off with someone, we were doing signs, we used to do signs, every, every, you know, every time an application had to come to the board.
Half the meeting was sign, site plan approval.
What sizes?
Oh, really?
And these guys managed to devote as much attention to a sign as to a major subdivision.
What kind of bulbs are you putting around?
Where is the numbers?
Yeah.
How big are they?
Well.
Where are the numbers?
That's, that's.
Yep.
That's emergency.
We had a, a planning board number, Tom something, uh.
Crawford.
Tom Crawford, was it him?
Yeah, with the, uh, storage unit, storage unit.
He, he had a self-storage unit, and he wanted, he didn't wanna be there all day. He wanted people to call his phone number, and he would drive down the street and say, yeah, this is, you know, give you money and I'll bridge this thing. And there was a rule that said you couldn't have contact information on your.
Sign.
On your sign, so he went down to the county clerk's office and did a D B A, doing business as, you know, three one five, four seven six seven, I'll see. I like this process so much, I'm gonna play it.
Oh, it costs five bucks?
Yep. I would expect that the heck of a. Sorry.
It's a, it's a good night to do it.
Yeah.
Being Gary's last night.
Oh, yeah.
Who's a little mad at Gary for abandoning us?
Well. I didn't, I didn't think I'd be, uh, leaving so soon.
You will, you will.
I did. Well, moved up, my first time here, I was, I was sitting way down there at one point. Bob gets, you guys get the shift up?
Experience board and.
Yeah.
And we might have to replace.
Yeah.
Do we have anybody coming on?
We're working on.
Three.
Good.
I'm on the county planning.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's it.
So again, Gary, thank you for your service, you're, you're.
Thank you. Yep. Well, when I first moved here, I, I said, that was one of the things I said, I wanted to get involved in town somehow, and I didn't know, and I said, okay, I think this is gonna fit me pretty good, I'll do it, I'll try that, and I think it's worked out, so I've enjoyed it. Yeah.
It is.
Yeah, I know, then other stuff, yeah.
John, thanks for setting up the snacks.
Yep, thank you very much for that, my wife will appreciate it, too, I'll bring, put it back to her.
Oh, crap. We have anything else, we talked about the extension, uh, the December fourteenth agendas, do you wanna put that on the minutes at the bottom, okay, so we know what's coming up?
Oh.
Alright, well, that being said, I think, uh, Gary should make the motion.
Yep, I will make a motion to adjourn my final planning board meeting at eight oh four P M.
There's a second, died in a second.
Well, midnight, midnight, I'm man, I can't go past that.
An honorable second.
Thank you.
Alrighty, the chief requests we make a motion to adjourn. Alright.
I thought you were getting a little teary-eyed, not, not, I feel like I should.
So, we're gonna.